All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Whitton. Commissioner Wadilla.
Here.
Commissioner Mamonie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Chair Stephenson.
Here.
And Commissioner Allen.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay. And with that, we will do pledge allegiance, and Commissioner Wadilla will be leading us this evening. And did everyone receive a copy of the minutes for the December second, two thousand and twenty rent burden meeting? And do we have any correction?
Commissioner Wilcox.
Any corrections?
It says Commissioner Wilcox, do you hear me?
I can hear you both.
Okay. I have several, not a huge number, but more than a few. Can write into it if you're ready. On page two, under Troutdale's rental profile paragraph, it says renters live in all housing types, including single-family houses, duplexes, RVs, and rented homes. I wonder what's meant by rented homes, if that's not included in the previous examples. Does anyone have any ideas on that?
Yeah, that would be more accurate to say, because single-family homes, what we were trying to say, it's not just apartments. Family homes, RVs, duplexes, rented rooms.
So home to room.
Okay, so I thought rented homes kind of duplicated single-family houses. Okay. Page three. First paragraph, four lines down. The phrase debt burdened, I think that should probably be rent burdened. Do you find that?
Where was that, Mr. Wilcox again?
First paragraph, fourth line down, from the top. Then in the next paragraph. Last line reads. While renters are spread across various housing types with a majority in multifamily housing. I questioned that statement because on page five of the PowerPoint, it said there were twenty-two hundred rentals total, of which nine-hundred-and-fifty were apartments. So that would actually be less than the majority being in apartments. So I'm not saying that minutes are inaccurate, but I questioned the accuracy of that statement. So I don't know. That's, that's kind of one of the situations where the minutes might necessarily, I don't, might not necessarily need to be corrected if that's what was said.
I, I guess I would read that to possibly say that nine-hundred-and-fifty are in multifamily. But then you've also got them in single-family.
And Mr. Wilcox, again, I'm sorry, I was just a little slow on which page you were on, so I can take a look at it again.
Three. Second paragraph, last sentence. Well, I kind of read it to say that it's not a majority of the twenty-two hundred, but a majority of the renters are in multifamily.
Well, that, that's, that's not the way the PowerPoint read.
Okay.
Okay. Then on the next paragraph down, very last line says, historically in Oregon, East City has an obligation to make sure it has sufficient affordable housing per state law. That's the first I've heard of that, actually. You know, what's, what's considered affordable in Lake Oswego isn't the same as what's considered affordable in Troutdale. So I just, just had a comment on that statement. Next up would be page five. Under the number four solutions, they see a reference to Affordable Housing Committee, which has until now been in, been the planning commission. It's the first I've heard of such a thing as the Affordable Housing Committee. Didn't know there was such a thing.
Housing committee, that was just official.
Yeah, you can strike that. The word affordable.
Next up would be very bottom, very bottom of page seven. I think it was Nathan Clark was speaking, says the very last line, something larger than an SRO, and that takes money to build. I didn't know what SRO stands for.
That, that can be spelled out. That's a single-room occupancy is what, what that meant.
Okay, that was my best guess, but I think it'd be worthwhile spelling it out. Okay. Top of page eight. There's a reference to pay their employees a living wage, which drives up the cost for developers. Correct term is actually prevailing wage. Living wage and prevailing wage aren't the same thing. Prevaling wage is more a government-established wage scale. The next paragraph below that, I see a reference or a statement, Multnomah County. Meanwhile, half of the employees in Multnomah County who make fourteen dollars an hour have been laid off. I'm not sure where that came from and the accuracy of it, or whether it's supposed to read, who make under fourteen dollars an hour. It's just kind of a confusing statement. I don't know what it's trying to say.
Hour, fourteen dollars an hour or less, I think.
Okay. Page nine. The last line of the first paragraph. Again, I see debt burdened rather than, rather than rent burdened. And a couple paragraphs down, the one that starts with Ms. Castillo White, she makes a reference to what says League of Cities, which should read League of Oregon Cities. And next paragraph down from that, the line that starts, Mr. Dangan. Very end of that line says, no one wants to build Soviet-style concrete lots, but there is something to be said. I think it should be concrete blocks, B-L-O-C-K-S, rather than lots. Okay, and the very last paragraph on page nine starts with Mr. Eric. The last, last line reads, well, I'll pack up a little bit. Prevailing wage helps raise the building, talking about the police building. Help raise the building cost to one-point-nine million, should read by one-point-two million. Trying to halfway follow along with your corrections on my computer screen and my paper pages, pages at the same time. That's actually all I have marked. The next two pages are clean from my standpoint. There you go. Thank you.
Did we pick up the ones on screen? Did you get those?
The ones on page three, we had as rent burden instead of debt burden. And then I think there was the question about the majority of the multifamily housing, but that might have been a question about the accuracy of that figure as, or the statement as opposed to a syntax error. So I don't know. That's up to you all how you would want to handle that.
Okay.
But it was, it was a verbal comment.
Right. And then you had one more on that page.
If there was, we might have missed it, so.
About it being
Oh. Technically, that, that's somewhat correct. It's a little indirectly stated, but the state requires each city to have ample housing. It's really what the state law says, but elsewhere in the state land use require, land use requirements, it does say that the cities have to enable or allow for affordable housing to be part of the housing inventory. So it's indirectly correct, I would say.
Okay.
So it's, it's your call if you want to edit that to reflect that.
I'm okay. Everyone else, okay? Okay, any other corrections?
Meeting minutes of March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
That should be December second. My microphone is on in the background. You all don't find meeting.
Page eleven. Halfway down, wonders if there is a, I think it should say crop of volunteers. I think that was you.
On page eleven, you said?
Yeah.
Oh, core volunteer.
Okay. Okay.
I, but I think it says core in there, or unless I'm reading that wrong.
It says you are here.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Good. Motion to approve maybe?
I moved the, we approved the minute. Minutes or for, I'm sorry, I'm struggling here. For March tenth, two thousand and twelve. Or two thousand and twenty-one, sorry, I'm in the wrong room today evidently, as amended.
Can we? You'd be willing to take in a friendly amendment and make that December second, two thousand and twenty?
Yes, I will. Yes, sorry. I'm in the, I've been in too many meetings today.
A second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Oh, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes from December second, two thousand and twenty, as amended. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Eric. Now we are on to Wednesday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. And Mr. Wilcox, you are up.
Okay, thank you, Chair Stephenson. Just a few on this one, I think. Page two, the very bottom. Where it says, Mr. Dangan showed a slide with a view of the house from several years ago, titled View from Northwest Sundell Road and Northwest Swagger Way. That entire sentence refers to, I think, the other hearing we had on the same night. Definitely doesn't apply to the the house with the the shed.
That may have been because of incorrect labeling on the slide itself, so we can, we can correct that to have the proper street frontage for that.
Okay. Let me see. Looks like the rest, the rest of it was all hearing, and I don't have anything else. Thought there was more, but that's it.
Any other corrections? Anyone? Okay. Page nineteen. Our commissioner comments. Chair Stephenson reported that the council committee, that should be town center committee. Your mid-time. I'm in on page twenty. Can see that. That was all I had. Any other corrections? Motion, maybe you guys. Entertain a motion for the minutes.
Do we have any amendments?
Yes.
I move through the minutes of December sixteen, two thousand and twenty as amended.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve meeting minutes from Wednesday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See, that one carried. We are in tonight's discussion items, and if it is okay with the commission, we would like to flip the two items and do development standards for senior housing first, and then takes, take mixed-use zone districts after that. Everyone okay with that change? Okay. All right.
Before we get too deep, just want to make sure in everybody's packet that they received a memo from us as well as some perspective code language. Do we, did we get that in your packet? Okay. Okay, all right. So this is, and full disclosure, we did also introduce this topic last night for city council to give them a heads up because this could potentially be a topic of controversy moving forward, potentially at your hearing and potentially at the council hearing. So we wanted to at least let them know that this was on the horizon. One of the things that the housing needs analysis had called out for was that the city should consider expanding opportunities to allow for dedicated or age-restricted housing, or fifty-five and over style housing. Right now, we have about three prospective developments that are kind of eyeing this opportunity to consider or looking at, and wanting to maybe pursue senior housing development as part of or entirely as, as far as the full portion of their development. Several cities around the state and many across the country do allow for certain concessions or specific standards in their respective development codes as they pertain to senior housing. And the reason is somewhat justified. Or at least that's how, how, how communities justify that, is generally seniors may have a lesser impact on public services or less of a need for, for many of these, say, like playgrounds or whatever. Not to say that seniors couldn't go to playgrounds, but it's not a common feature of senior housing. Several communities around the country, particularly in warmer climates like California and Arizona and Florida, Carolinas, they, they have, you know, age-restricted communities, single-family communities, and even some, some townhomes or middle housing types. But the type of senior housing we're referring to here for this potential text amendment is more toward multifamily residential development. Senior housing is generally locked in through deed restriction at the time when a community is filed, either by plat or, or through financing. You would handle it through deed restrictions, so it is perfectly legal to have senior housing restrictions. The question really before you is, is it appropriate for Troutdale to consider unique standards for senior housing? You have precedent of doing this for certain types of housing, not necessarily for age-restricted. Once upon a time, with the previous development code, the code that existed before two thousand and seventeen, you had a classification called congregate housing, which is somewhat like senior housing, although congregate as a term is, is kind of an older term. It's not used as much anymore, but it's generally now thought more to be kind of an age, a, a, a facility that where people live, but have, have assistance, like almost assisted living-like. And you do still have certain standards that apply for that now called shared dwellings, which are either that type of category or say a college dormitory-style thing. And again, the argument made for those types of facilities is generally they have lesser impact on the community, whether it be fewer vehicle trips made on average, or just fewer needs to have, have other, other amenities, either onsite or adjacent to it. So the, the starting point for this discussion tonight, where we see typically most cities look at, at creating specific standards for senior housing is really in three areas, although there could be others that could be considered tonight, and that's ideally part of your discussion. The three typical areas where there are some concessions in the code that are given are reducing what we call the base level or the minimum size that a lot has to be on by twenty-five percent. That's just a suggested figure by us, but just considering a, a minimum lot size reduction. And why you would want to consider that is because of the other two bullet points in, in this list here. The second concession would be considering a reduction of parking. When we're talking about fifty-five and over units, we're generally talking no more than two people in a unit, because it presumes a married or cohabitated couple or partnership. And in many cases, it's just one person or a solo. So many of these senior-type housing units often have an average number of people at between one-point-four to one-point-eight, depending on the market. So then it suggests, okay, well, you may not have as many vehicles at your disposal or have as much need to take trips. And in some cases, there can be paratransit, senior transit, or in some cases, just full regular transit immediately nearby. So that is one other consideration to, to look into. And then reducing required recreational area spaces, and again, for multifamily, when we do have those recreation area standards in place, it's generally to accommodate playgrounds, pools, fitness, but largely outdoor spaces, not necessarily getting rid of or suggesting you have to trim communal spaces inside. But admittedly, those features are generally meant for more family or, or universal age use as opposed to just restricted for seniors. So those are three types of, of concessions that we typically see. The attachment that we included with this memo suggests those three potential items. But there could be more, there could be less. Again, we wanted to give you just a starting point to chew on and express your concerns or, or other ideas that you have. The last paragraph there again provides kind of arguments in favor as to why you may want to consider it. But ultimately, if this is not a right fit for the community, at some point in the future, if a text amendment is forwarded, and we expect to forward it pretty soon to you all, you can make your suggestions, and then ultimately council gets to make the call. So with that, I will happily yield back, and I'll be happy to screen share, but I'll decouple that now so we can take any, any questions from you.
Okay, opening questions? Anyone? Shirley, Ms. Pickett?
Is there going to be like, my consideration would be more like if any kind of senior housing that I've seen is either if it's age-restricted, and again, parking would be the issue here, but if they have visitors and there is no parking for the visitors, they have to have some kind of visitor parking. So, I mean, you can limit it to one space per unit, but again, that might be too restrictive unless they come up with a way for visit, because if, if I'm, if I'm living in that community and my kids want to come, they're not going to come because there's nowhere to park. And they're not going to use mass transit, I can tell you that. Just, just by way my kids talk, so.
Yeah, and I think that's partially where we originally came up with the two per unit and then the one extra per three.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a consideration to have. I think one additional note to make. There are some, and, and you know, this is not necessarily reflective of Troutdale or suburban communities.
Right.
Outst that, but in some cases, some of these senior units, some do not have cars. A lot of times, these units, in addition to being senior units, could also be income restricted, and you may have people who are either unable to drive or can't afford a car of their own. We've seen other communities, and I'm not saying we should reflect that, but we see other communities who either waive parking altogether, which I think is preposterous for us, or have a ratio of like point-five or point-seven-five spaces per unit. We were suggesting one, but to your point, you know, we are a different community, if you want to consider. Yes, parking is part of that equation. That's well within, it's defensible.
Well, and it would be okay if we had better mass transit? Because we really don't have, I mean, other than Stark Street and Halsey, those are the only main transit corridors we have. I mean, you could say two-fifty-seventh, but that one doesn't run very often, and it takes a while to connect from one bus line to the next. So again, that's another issue, and I would, if it was going to be, it would be kind of nice if they were cottage clusters and not a four- or three-story apartment complex. Do you see where? It'd be, it'd be easier for seniors to get around if it wasn't in a my, it's a safety thing for me, because if seniors are on a, in a three-story building and it goes up in flames, they ain't going to be able to get down quick enough. Because most of the housing clusters that are over fifty-five clusters that I've seen are usually single-level and are in a cluster. More like a cottage cluster thing.
Some are, but there are some that are around that are multi.
Right, right.
I'd like to also insert about the parking. Sometimes with the reducing the required parking, the way that multifamily development uses too is it's not, you're designated, they can approach it two ways, where unit four oh one will have a parking spot of their own, or it's kind of a free-for-all, but there's enough parking to meet that requirement. So in terms of senior housing, sometimes that's So in terms of senior housing, sometimes that could be relieved because there might be units that doesn't need the parking, but there might still be available enough available parking spots where it's not each designated units. And that's what I've seen in some developments where instead of each parking space is designated. And then that that I've also seen it as a way for visitor parking to also be available. So it's not, there's just different ways to do that. And I guess it's kind of hard to say exactly how any developer will go through it until we get an application. But we definitely should keep that in mind, what you're bringing up Shirley, because I think we will need to consider the visitor parking as a big contribution, especially with seniors and errands that you'll need assist, any senior will need assistance with. Commissioner Allen.
So it it seems to me that developers are typically pushing for too little parking and subsequent residents are usually complaining about not enough parking. Yeah, that seems to be a trend. I know that when I go visit my wife's mother, there's nowhere to park. It's very difficult. I actually had an easier time visiting Shirley's dad than I than I do my wife's own mom. So the question is, is what is actually realistic? Do we know that?
As far as real, can you expand on that, Commissioner Allen?
Well, realistic is, you take a look around and you take a look at how many parking spaces developments have. And you see some that are just just always full. I would say that they did too too little parking. And then there's others where it's it seems adequate. The question is, is what will the actual use look like? Are there any studies on that or is it just a trend to not have enough?
There there may be some, I think what we would, what we would probably do as a staff for your your packet when when it does come up as a text amendment, we would give you some standards as far as what other communities have. And we might be able to find out the parking utilization of it. Last night when we we discussed the issue, I know one of one of your former colleagues here, Councilor Krenz, Glance now, excuse me. Sure, Sandy, she had mentioned a facility, I think in Gresham where the original, it was kind of a and John Paulo, you might know it too, it was, I think, on Stark and 223rd.
Bonaventure.
Yeah, where it's kind of a hybrid senior housing, then kind of assisted living and then kind of there's several stages of 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 housing flexibility. So not just senior housing, but also assisted care too. And that apparently there was not enough parking afforded there, but I don't claim to know offhand the the parking ratios in Gresham for something like that, let alone a blended facility. Because here's the thing too, you do have parking standards for those assisted living facilities on the books right now. This is really looking at it exclusively just as a residence where you're not talking about onsite needs. I think the what I'm basically that you're not having an assisted or managed care facility. We're just talking about now straight apartments or or condominiums or cottages, what that appropriate ratio is. That's that's what we're getting at.
Yeah, more importantly than standards would be what actually works.
So Commissioner Allen, just to confirm maybe more of, instead of a standards of other cities, you want to see possible similar senior housing and kind of like a a snapshot look at their parking and how they look like at peak hours and then at not peak hours and see how full that would be. So peak hours would be probably on a weekend, on a Saturday, where families would be visiting and helping with errands. And then non-peak hours would be, you know, during the weekday and taking a snapshot of possibly three communities. Is that, am I hearing that right?
Oh, yeah, that would be awesome, just to just to do good development. One of the, one of the nice things about living in Troutdale is it's been well planned and it becomes a a nice place to to live. So I'd like to not incorporate mistakes that some of the other cities have done.
Say, you know, a couple of recent examples, you know, you look at Eagle Ridge. And one of the things that happened with that was we got a lot of testimony from the community about there not going to be enough parking. And we were already over the standard at that point. And the developer elected to add more. And it was kind of the same situation with the Cherry Park one too, where the community was really up up in arms about people maybe parking in the neighborhood. I know it's not senior, but I think that parking just tends to be a little bit of a an issue sometimes with folks. Sandy, I see that your ears were burning.
I don't know about my ears burning, but.
Also no.
That just came in, so guessing you're talking about senior parking for senior housing?
Yes, and we are, we already referenced your comment last night.
Anyone else have a comment? Oh, Commissioner Mamon.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I I would like just to ask Chris for your LPR second. Put put this document in context because this is what I'm, I think I'm missing right now because I understood something, but maybe you meant something else. So this is an introductory document, if I understood correctly, that wants some conversation from the commissioner and eventually this is going to go in front of the in front of the council. But but you were, if I understood correctly, were saying it's going to go relatively fast in front of the council. So did I understood correctly? How much time do we have to have this conversation? Because this is for obvious reason, if it's an introductory document, offers some generalities about a little bit of everything. Age restriction, parking spacing number, typology. How much do we ever really have to to put some tooth into it and and come with our recommendation to the council? It can be a comprehensive, articulated recommendation.
Right, so I think what we were trying to do tonight is introduce what we believe would be a future text amendment to allow for just specific senior housing standards. And basically to then look at incorporating it within, at the very least, the A2 multifamily zoning district as a possibility. And then looking at where in the code you could consider a concession to allow for it. And I know we've talked mostly about parking tonight, but there's also the the possibility of reducing the overall land size, the amount of land required to actually build, which then limits the density in addition to how much, you know, recreation space you're required. The argument in a way, if you think about it, if you can reduce or if if it's tolerable to reduce the recreation area and if it's tolerable to reduce some of the parking load, then you don't need as much land to actually develop the site. And what we're finding is we have certain areas of the city where we think you could accommodate senior housing in a logical area, in some, in some cases along transit routes, and actually in most cases, where the lots may be too small for conventional apartment style development because of the parking, because of the 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 open space requirements that you have. And we also are in a situation where we know we have a building cap and development, when they're running their pro formas, they're not being able to effectively generate a project that can that can cut it. So without, you know, this is not saying that you have to completely upend your code to accommodate development, but you have to understand, I think, that the landscape, the cost of doing of constructing frankly is getting higher. And we still see the need, the housing need did identify this need and we we see the demographic shift. There's a substantial amount of this community that is getting older and may wish to retain residency in here, but may not have the ability or the desire to have a larger, a larger home. So we're just trying to figure out a way, is is this a good idea to accommodate?
But when are you, when are you proposing going in front of the council with with some sort of recommendation? That that's that's to me the fundamental question because at this point, I am, I am less concerned, this is personal, of course. I am less concerned with the specifics about, you know, lot size and parking because to me, this is, this is, this is a refinement of of a project already as a rationale that we all agree with it. I'm most concerned about other things. So when are you proposing to go in front of the council with our recommendation? Because to me, before we go to the details, it's like everything, if you build a an apartment complex that is six blocks by four blocks, we are not start to talk about the radius of of the of the of the tile for the baseboard. We are talking about really the masses for so you, because you make a statement, I don't know. I don't know if I mean agreement or disagreement, but to me, the rationale is for, you know, you said allows more option for all the resident to remain in Troutdale. Is 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 this anecdotal data, is this real data? Why? And why is more, and again, I don't want to ask for right now, this is this is clear. I I'm just raising question because in my mind, there are this question before we go and pinpoint and crystallize and focus on the specifics of the number of parking, the percentage of 0.72 per unit or so. So why is, is it, why would he make true the statement that all the arrangement, all the residents can stay in in Troutdale? Is it just a reduction of lot size for the benefits of developer? Where is in the end a tangible benefit for the city, for the community, for the residents? And and how all these things we talk about, reducing open space for the resident, which are potentially on every, they are a possibility to go somewhere else. So to me, before we go and talk the the details about the parking, the unit, the size, square size and apartment complex duplexes or apartment, we need to talk about this rationale because this is going to be the defining moment that either the rationale support this, this or the legislation really is unnecessary. And I'm, I'm not suggesting anything right now because I already don't know. This is the first time I've used this city's document.
Yeah, so John Paulo, I just want to add in in our efforts last year in the Housing Committee, one of the efforts was the Housing Needs Analysis. And in that Housing Needs Analysis and in our, and to commemorate it is also the Housing Production Strategy that we were working on. But in the Housing Needs Analysis, there was there was data that backs up that there are more Troutdale residents who would like to age in place or the population of Troutdale were aging in place. And a lot of the residents weren't moving out of Troutdale to reside or retire somewhere else. And there was that data that showed that. And then in reflection of that, in our discussion last year too about, you know, strategies, there was a call up for for us to really analyze senior housing, the need for senior housing. And this effort kind of is a way for us to commemorate that with also the the talks of Home Forward coming in. But there there is data that backs that up and there's a lot more families in Troutdale Trail, Troutdale that are staying too. And also being rent burdened, as you know, in our other meetings about the rent burden meetings too. So I do want to, I can bring that up too, if you, I can definitely bring that up. And I think we had expressed a desire to relook at some of the policies to the housing goal sometime this year, sometime maybe in in the summer. We had talked last year in the fall to bring it up in spring, but we, because of the schedule that we have, I think summer might be the time that we bring it up again, follow up that discussion.
I I would love to see if it's possible, of course, if it's available, I would love to see the kind of data because, you know, a a lot, a lot of times, you know, we understand obviously we have to pay attention that the resident says, you know, or some resident, because that's the problem, because there are 100 residents or 200 residents or even 1,000 residents then come and say, we we want age restricted housing. And and we focus and crystallize, but there are 79,000 that stay home and they say absolutely not. So if there is this data, please, I would love to take a look at it. You know, if there is an academic study, if there is a research done by my municipalities, no, but I mean to disregard the the public opinion, even if it's a minority. Because at times, you know, I want to, unless it makes 75% or 80% of the population that says I want it. But if you if you do have it, and I'm not aware of it, of course, because maybe it was before my time. If it could be available, that would be great because this would help us to make a decision and corroborate also public opinion in 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 support of this if it is necessary.
And I think to to underscore that, though, the Housing Needs Analysis was approved by the council. So this is effectively one of the action items from that analysis that is suggesting, hey, you should look into your your books, your codes and see, are, you know, are there opportunities to do it? I mean, some committees, some some communities find other ways to maybe attract or encourage senior housing. They may do it through financial incentive or other other entitlement processes. I think this one affords us an opportunity to look at the code, see maybe if there are any any hindrances to to developing it. And and what we what we find in our research is those are usually the the three that you see here on the screen are the three areas when cities may seek to amend their code to encourage it. Those are the three general areas that they usually tackle it through. I don't think, and I could be wrong, but I don't suspect there's going to be as much appetite. And I think there would be a lot of financial concern if we were trying to encourage it through financial or budgetary means or incentives or programs. Like some communities may choose to waive SDC requirements for for senior housing or reduce it. That would not be a good thing for us. Maybe able to incentivize it through through code or at least encourage it through code because.
I understand, Chris, I appreciate it because that was partially tangibly also part of my concern is what was going to really benefit that, then we're going to have a conversation about that, I hope. But I understand now a little bit better, I appreciate your comments and me as well. But if that study could be made available, even just to to understand a little bit better where everything, even the the rationale and division of the council start from will be very helpful as Commissioner, thank you.
Well, and and realize that, you know, this is going to be a pretty hot topic. And before it makes it to council, it's got to clear you guys. And the good news is we're not the ones that have to make decisions on what gets incentivized and what doesn't. That goes to the council. We just make a recommendation if we feel there's something in the code that maybe needs to be adjusted or updated.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and that's why, again, to me is more relevant that whenever I talk as a commissioner in this, in this specific instance, I know what I'm talking about. And so having the data to support that, even because I'm not familiar with the data, would help in 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 secure my voice one way or the other in support of whatever the, my colleagues on the on the commission or the council might be. But that's why, again, I'm asking if it's possible to receive part of the study so that we can have very clear idea, it is not anecdotal data in our mind. Because 50 or 100 cities might say one way or the other. So if it is available, it would be nice to to have it.
We will make sure that that each commissioner has access to it. The the documents are available online, we'll send you the links.
And I just want to to add to that and not to keep going, but I looked into my notes and the Troutdale's housing strategy that we had worked on with Eco Northwest. One of the policies were to evaluate opportunities of development of senior housing in areas appropriate for seniors housing, work with developers to support development of senior housing. And when we worked with Eco Northwest, we had identified, you know, how fast do we want to do these strategies and the implementation? And for this specific policy, it was ranked high and medium, it was a split and high as in as soon as possible and medium is within one to three years. So we were within this, the the target of the outcomes of the workshop that we did with Eco Northwest as part of the Housing Committee.
And I would agree with that, but we're also, I think we're also a little ahead of the curve on the housing study as a whole. Aren't we? Well, adopted that a little sooner than we actually were required to.
Yes.
Yeah, it's two different things though. The Housing Needs Analysis needed to be adopted. And with the new state law, there was a requirement of the deadline. This is, I I'm talking about the the strategy, not the analysis. So the strategy is not really, the strategy itself, based on what state planners have informed us, is not something that we do need to adopt, but it's something that cities should work towards. And they're not really. And they're not really having a definite answer in how to really approach this. But we had started the work on this already, and I would hate for our planning commission and housing professionals who did do the workshop with Eco Northwest to and have all these discussions about housing for City of Troutdale and not follow up with some of the things that we deemed important in the workshops that we did. So that's kind of why I wanted to bring that up too, because within our Housing Committee itself, we found that it was pretty important to start implementing that strategy.
Well, to be clear, I'm not at all advising that we would not do it.
Yeah, I understand.
Right.
Okay.
No, but you're saying we're ahead of the curve.
I guess what I'm saying is, as far as cities adopting a Housing Needs Analysis and taking those steps, we are on the front side of that.
That's fair.
Yeah, we definitely are. And we're in the front steps of implementation to talking about this strategy way before we need it to. And I think we're really good at doing that.
Okay.
I think Councilor Glance has her
Oh. I just wanted to make a quick note. When I first started on the Planning Commission, there were some joint sessions with council. And one of their priorities was to not have senior housing because of the cost to the fire department for all the calls they had to go out on to help pick up seniors. And now that we're part of Gresham, that point is no longer necessarily valid. But that's kind of one of the reasons we didn't end up with a lot of senior housing in Troutdale to begin with.
Chris, Paul.
Go ahead.
From a parking standpoint, you're making kind of a false assumption when you talk senior. You seem to be equating senior with retired. I mean, when you said that the age limit at fifty five, when I've read about age restricted fifty five and over, it only requires one person in the residence to be fifty five. You could have a fifty five year old and a forty five or thirty five year old for that matter. So, and, you know, fifty five year olds going to be in the, I don't know, my retired fifty five year olds, they're going to be in the workforce and committing to work for another ten, fifteen years. So I'm thinking you're really, you know, when you call it senior housing, it's not, you know, eighty year olds, ninety year olds that don't drive anymore and can't get around on their own.
Good point.
And one other thing I wanted to mention, Chris, you mentioned about reducing the lot size and that not increasing density. But if you're reducing the size of the units, say, go to a one bedroom or a one bedroom plus den, which would be perfectly adequate for most seniors, I would think, that you could use up less ground space that way, have more units per square foot.
Probably.
Okay. We have any other recommendations?
Of the, I guess, one thing that staff would request feedback from you all tonight is on the screen right here. This is kind of the initial draft language that we have suggested. If there is feedback to change any of what would be in front of you in front of a text, and which, of course, you have the ability to change during the hearing or after the hearing, when this comes back before you in a formal setting. But if you want something different shown on the opening offer, for lack of a better word, we would request any suggestions to this draft language, preferably now or the coming days, because we do anticipate this coming before you very soon.
This is Rich.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I can see myself someday not wanting as much yard to take care of. And possibly giving up some recreational space for some walking space. Maybe I'm not so interested in doing the heavy physical activity, but I might want to walk more. I can see stuff like that. Just giving another perspective as to how space might be used.
Okay. As far as take that the rest of the way, if you would.
So I'm less likely going to be playing basketball or tennis, and I may not be playing on the merit go round. But my wife is always trying to get me out to walk, and that's happening more and more as time goes on. So when we're talking about how much recreational space do we need per dwelling unit, there's a change in how this space is going to be used. And therefore, there may be room for some reduction there, but also a modification of how that space is used.
I've had family at Courtyard Fountains in Gresham. And that's kind of a wraparound facility with a courtyard in the middle. But anyhow, the middle space is where all the families gather when they visit.
Is that exclusively a senior housing arrangement, or is that an assisted living type situation?
There's two parts. One is, one isn't.
One thing also to be clear on the standard, because I think it's important to document here, because we've talked a lot about parking tonight. There is a qualifier for a, at least the way we've initially drafted it on the parking. And the assumption that you have the ability to reduce the parking, provided that the facility is within five hundred feet of a fixed route transit stop. So if you're not within five hundred feet, you're subject to the regular parking system would be applied, which is probably further encouragement for development if they're considering this to try to be logical about where they place it. So that was one thought, if there was that concern about still the auto reliance of it, how you might address it.
Transit stops also, there's
Sorry.
Not that many.
There's not that many, correct.
Well, what we'd be looking at is going from two to one in essence, and we'd be eliminating the one for three provision.
Potentially. I mean, you also, in some areas of the city, not all, you also could have on-street parking if the lot is adjacent to it, where you wouldn't be parking on two fifty seventh, for instance. But if you have a street adjacent to it, you might be able to park there. You know, so there are some potential adjacent options too, or you can tick up that number if you want to suggest that.
Right. I think we're going off the assumption that there isn't on-street parking.
Right. But I think we're also here going off the assumption, although Commissioner Wilcox brought up a good point about, you know, there might still be working seniors or people younger than fifty five who are living with somebody over fifty five. So these are fair questions. That's why we're bringing them to you now.
Yeah. Just me personally, I would assume that most of them would have a vehicle. You ever tried to take a car away from an older person? Sometimes it's a little hard. Okay, and if we're, let's go back to A, and if we're reducing the base by twenty five percent on, let's say, fifty units.
Well, let me go to the next page, because that might explain it a little bit better. It's a little bit of a technical document. But when we're talking about what your density standards are, depending on how large your development may be, there is a minimum lot size that is required. So like, take this one, for instance, here, because this one is about an acre in size. So if you had, if you wanted to develop, let's say seventeen multifamily units, you're in this fifteen to thirty seven range. You're required to have forty one thousand square feet, so basically about an acre of property plus two thousand square feet for each unit over fifteen. So you would be required to have at least forty five thousand square feet on your lot under the standard situation. Because that presumes building footprint, parking at a two and a third ratio, and required open space in order to actually make the thing fit. If you are able, however, to reduce the parking, and you are able to consider a reduction in recreational space, you don't need as much land to actually make that development work. Right. You still maintain the density level as far as how many units you are allowed to do, but you can reduce the minimum threshold. So instead of forty one thousand, it would be closer to thirty thousand. That's roughly a twenty five percent plus the two thousand per unit. So that, what would have required forty five thousand would now require thirty four thousand for that hypothetical example.
Thirty four to forty five. And so our lot coverage would be?
I'd have to do, we'd have to look at the math on that. But that's kind of the essence of what we're talking about. We're not talking about reducing the additional two thousand per unit. We're talking about that base number, what we have highlighted there, reducing, providing a reduction there.
Okay, any questions on that? And then on the open space, we'd be going to fifty percent less potentially. Giving them the option. Okay.
This is the reference section from what we currently have on the books for what we require for multifamily development. And again, the typical treatment that we've seen in Troutdale over the years with multifamily development is playground or outdoor amenities space, specifically playground.
How many sixty plus? Would you estimate that we have? Because I know we're a fairly young community.
You mean as far as age restricted?
Yeah. No, 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 age presently populous.
Oh, you mean as a percentage of our population? Irene, do you recall, or Amber, do you? I want to say it's close to twenty, twenty five percent of our city.
I'm trying to look into the documents. Would you mind repeating exactly what you're looking for again?
What percent of our current population would be sixty plus?
Okay.
Sixty five, because that's a typical
Okay, sixty five plus.
Okay, let me dig into the H and A, and I can get back to you shortly, if you want. I'll just let you know when I find facilities right up on Cherry Park.
You're talking about the two largest, meaning?
Senior care.
Yeah, but again, those are not senior housing. Seniors live there, but that's not senior housing. They are, yeah, Cherry Park Plaza, they're across from the high school.
Okay.
So the percentage
A question?
Troutdale is what about, you said twenty five percent?
That was just a guesstimate. It might be a little bit lower, actually, come to think of it.
You again?
I imagine that, right. It seems to me like there's a difference between, like Cherry Park, which has a lot of memory care, where the residents don't have a lot of vehicles necessarily, but there's a much heavier staff load. How can that be addressed in this to where, I mean, there's different types of senior living that have different staffing requirements?
I think as intended, at least the way we would define senior housing, is these are residential units that do not have any human service or facilitator or assistant care facilities on there. Now, there are, and I think you were mentioning this last night too, there are facilities where you have part of the facility is effectively independent. They're just apartments. Then there's like the transitional, and then there's like the greater need. I would think with that one, we would have to effectively look, if we got an application like that, we would have to look at what portion of the facility is senior housing, what portion of it is age assisted care, what portion is memory care, because we do have those parking standards. For those two other facilities, we wouldn't have it yet for senior housing. So I think we would divvy it up. That's how we would, I think, intend to do it.
Even independent living has, like, cooks that come in and do the meals, and the waiters, and the front desk people. And usually there's, you know, one emergency type medical certified person there of some kind. There's, you know, activity people. There's people that come in to do things for senior groups, you know, like when the kids bands come in and sing for them. Or, you know, they have a lot of people that do different musical things and stuff like that. It's not just residents.
Do the, just a question. So with those independent living facilities, do they have kitchens within the units, or are there any communal kitchens?
They have many kitchens. It's usually like a microwave, and a lot of times it don't have ovens. Because when we were shopping for my mom, that was one of the things, is we're trying to find a place that she could make cookies. And that wasn't very easy. A lot of independent living, they want you to have the meals. That's kind of where they make some money. But they also know that, you know, you want to make popcorn at night and stuff like that, so.
So, because what you're kind of alluding to, and I think there might be a gray area, that kind of drifts then into a shared dwelling type definition.
Everybody has their own apartment. They just, that's a pretty standard independent living, senior housing type is where, and actually Cherry Park has some of that too. Where, and Cherry Park does not have ovens in the units. They have microwaves. So I was trying to get my mom close to me, and there wasn't anything in Troutdale.
You don't want a microwave cookies, for sure.
I mean, you know, a lot of seniors grew up baking a lot, so it's a big deal to them.
No, absolutely. I think as intended by staff, and certainly, we would probably need to have a really good definition as far as what the intention was standard. Think of any sort of multifamily condominium or apartment without any sort of, not strings attached, but services provided as an expectation of residing there. It's just an independent condominium or apartment, but is reserved for ages fifty five and up through a code, through a
So like a apartment version of summer place?
Yeah. Basically.
Yeah, it's a good analogy.
So I was able to find the data that we're looking at. We don't have a complete, because the data was based, I think, on Metro Scope and also the Census estimates. There wasn't exactly a breakdown in Troutdale, but Multnomah County does have twenty two percent. They project twenty two percent of its population in twenty forty to be seniors. I think this was also a very important note in the Housing Needs Analysis and the growth and the number of seniors who would result in the demand of housing type specific to seniors. But one of the things that I did notice when I was also looking that this up is is that during the period that they were looking at is Troutdale's median age did grow by three point three years in the past. So not to be assumptions about it, not to put assumptions into it, but they were more likely to keep growing the aging population in Troutdale proper. And then this was also, this also mentioned that the largest population increase in Troutdale were older adults and senior age groups.
But we don't know how many that is, right?
No, I don't believe it. I just did a quick look just now. Well, I'm in this call with you guys and I didn't see that. I think they only have the data from Multnomah County proper for senior house, senior population.
Mind too, we, we should later this year get, get fresh numbers from the twenty-twenty census. So we're relying also on, on guesstimates from Portland State and from the census about it. But probably safe to say twenty percent roughly is, is a safe estimate, at least for sixty and over.
Yeah, it's probably going to keep, just based on the trends that we've seen, what we've seen so far, it's, it's going to keep increasing.
Okay.
Any more questions?
We'll, we'll highlight any, any additional resources for you on that. And that'll definitely be part of your, your application.
Okay.
Packet.
So we'll have some resources.
To look into.
Some data to back up.
Yeah.
These. And you guys are okay with these things coming back as written? With some data to support them? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think a little more definitive on parking.
Getting, getting some examples like, like Irene had suggested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can find that point. We'll make sure we find suburban examples rather than. And you know, here parking is going to be a hot topic.
Danny Rich has his hand up.
Yeah, I was just, just noticing. Am I accurate that we're all older than fifty-five on the commission? I think we are. Therefore, we really should have this down. We should understand it more than anybody.
Rich, I can say we, wife and I could get by with one car if need be.
We are coming back with. We will come back with that, that data. According to that, now we can see the complex. But with that, we have to really, really.
I just think in these, I'd put in the report a couple of examples, you know? X is going to do this just so that someone that's out there reading it at home can kind of understand what this is going to look like. And we all know that one of the properties is going to be close to downtown, most likely.
Well, that, they're not, yeah, I mean, that, that's a potential, but that, they're not the, it's, this is not being inspired by any, any particular property. It's being inspired by the housing needs analysis. But without question, there will be several properties, three that we know of, that will have asked about this and will, will probably want to pursue it if, if some measure of this goes forward.
Well, there's certainly some connection.
Potential.
Okay. Now to the fun one.
So this is a, let me go ahead and, and get to that section here, just a moment.
This came out of that three-city planning commission meeting that we had with Cascadia. And this is kind of Cascadia's shot at what they would recommend that we do.
In part, this is trying to dial this back, back home to starting at it and looking at this, at, at mixed use zoning in general, in particular. Because we have a couple of things going on. We have the Cascadia results. We also have a need to consider a new zoning district for the Confluence site, which was discussed at last night's city council meeting. That was the direction that this, the city council had asked us to do was to start developing that. And, you know, kind of just to take a general look at, at three particulars districts. The CBD, which is an existing central business district, downtown zoning district, if you will. Mixed office housing, which is a little bit more peripheral. And then a contemplated new zoning district. So the attachments that you have here tonight are kind of a reflection of that. The first one here was, again, looking at the CBD kind of in the left column, MOH in the middle column, and MU3, which would be this, the zoning district intended for the Confluence site as, as something a little bit more dense than what we have typically had, but might be appropriate for that, that property.
Can you bring out the other one?
Yeah. So since, since the time of this, this table in your packet, we do have a table that shows, again, kind of an existing situation where we highlight where there could be potential changes, either in land use or other considerations of this. Now, one thing I do want to stress is if we're moving forward on some changes to mixed use zoning, there's really going to be two potential applications. The first one would be the more urgent one, or I don't know if it's truly urgent, but the first one that we would expect it to move forward would be the new zoning district, the MU3. The second one would be to contemplate any other edits to the existing two mixed use zoning districts that we have. That's the CBD and the MOH. So the next, the, the mixed use Confluence site zoning district, we would, we would seek to have kind of reviewed first before we contemplated. But what we wanted to do tonight is show how these three zoning districts relate to each other on maps. And so those, those maps that were included in your, in your packet kind of speak to certain particular land uses where they would be permitted, permitted with specific standards, conditional or, or not allowed. Several of this is already existing. Some of this is presumptive and some of it is proposed. So should we start with the maps first or where, where do you want to start, Mr. Chair?
How about we start just a breeze through the table?
Sure.
Updated one.
Sure.
I had asked Chris to put in the current configuration along with the proposed. Okay, because I think it's a little easier to read that way.
Can everyone see that okay?
There you go.
So just a tour of the columns here real quick. Similar to the, what you had in your packet, the column A right here that we have highlighted is the land uses that are found in the development code and some that are currently actually not in the development code, but that we would propose to include, to eliminate some blind spots and some, some vague, vague assumptions that we've, we've experienced. Column B is the CBD zoning district as exists today. So this is again, the downtown zoning district, if you will. Column C is basically the extension of, it's, it's basically the trans, transitioning of CBD to what we call just a mixed use one zoning district. But it's basically, the intent remains, it leans commercial. They're generally smaller lots and they're really oriented toward a main street feel. Column two is called the, column D rather, is the existing mixed office housing zoning district, which we would propose, again, just for the sequence of numbering and to better highlight the mixed use nature of it, we would propose to call MU2 or general mixed use. The spirit and intent of, of this zoning district doesn't really change. It leans residential as opposed to commercial, but commercial uses could be allowed. Size, size, height and use varies, depends on the property itself. And that's kind of where some of the stuff from the Cascadia report from the Main Streets on Halsey effort may start to filter in a little bit more. We can talk about that. And then the final column, column F here, this is the brand new zoning district that council was introduced to last night, that we're introducing to you tonight. We've had a brief discussion about it before. And that is an urban mixed use or called Confluence mixed use. Could be a better title for it, that's fine. But this is what we're envisioning for development at Confluence potential. We're talking about more high-end preference toward vertical-based mixed use, although certainly not exclusive to that. And where the site itself, the uniqueness of that site can dictate a little bit more of what might be tolerable there as opposed to in other areas of the city. As we go through these rows here, when you see something that's highlighted in yellow, it indicates a change from the status quo. So for instance, quadplex and cottage cluster, these are land uses, but we don't actually have definitions for them currently in the code. We are expecting that we're going to need to have definitions for them if we want to make potential changes downwinds to these, to these districts. And there's a couple of other ones right here. We just talked about age restricted housing, that could be a potential definition there.
Chris, sorry to interrupt, just a second. Just to be sure, in our packets, we have a, a table, but it is not inclusive of the CBD and MOH.
Right. So your, your, your table indicates column C, E and F.
That is correct. That is correct. Okay, good.
Yeah, Danny, Mr. Stephenson had asked that, that B and D be inserted.
I, I just want to be sure that I wasn't missing something. I say, hey, thank you very much, appreciate it. Yep.
So as you go down the table and, and we can, we can hit on specific line items. We start with residential based land uses through here. We then get into commercial based land uses. A couple of industrial, a couple of mixed use and some other ones here too. We can talk about these bottom two here. They are pretty unique topics that are of supreme interest to a lot of people. But I'll, I'll defer to the chair where he wants to start.
Which ones are you talking about?
The TCAP review and the height restriction.
Go ahead and go with that.
Okay. So we'll, we'll go ahead and start with, with these. So let's start with height, because that's, that's probably the most controversial topic that we have that, that, that exists, apart from parking, of course. I should add, by the way, these mixed use zoning districts, we are not anticipating making any changes to required parking right now. Parking is handled in an entirely different chapter of the code. So there's no immediate effort to change any parking standards in any of these districts for any of these uses at the moment. Right now, across the city, there's generally a thirty-five foot height allowance or restriction that is for the CBD as it exists right now and for the mixed office housing as it exists. In general, commercial, excuse me, and in general industrial, you do have a higher height allowance of forty-five feet. But we're not talking about general commercial here tonight. We're talking about mixed use districts. What we're saying here is that what you have currently right now in the CBD is what we would continue to advocate for. You have a small town feel of a downtown. And in those areas where you have that CBD zoning district, where you would maintain it through a mixed use one downtown mixed use experience, keep the height at thirty-five feet. In your packet, you also have, and let me just change screens here real quick. In, in your packet, you also have a corresponding map. And I believe it's the fifth or sixth map in after the table that shows us. So again, here are your current height limits for your existing zoning. And you can see the lighter shade of blue is the thirty-five feet threshold. And here would be the presumed perspective heights with any potential zoning text changes. So you can see the downtown core right here, as well as the hillside up the hill. Any properties to the south of Halsey Street and the historic Columbia Highway would maintain thirty-five feet. There's no presumption, no desire to change that at all. Where the changes start to kick in are on the periphery, on the north side of Halsey Street, up to the corner and the intersection of two fifty-seventh. This is kind of where some of the suggestions from the Main Streets on Halsey Plan came about, where you may want to consider allowing for something taller than thirty-five feet. That's a very tough issue. And one of the suggestions that we would have potentially for you all, and we talked about this during the Town Center Plan Review, is potentially allowing Planning Commission to make a decision or, or to be given the opportunity to review development if people want to go above thirty-five feet. Because you guys are trained to look at the, the review criteria, you can evaluate it, it becomes a public hearing at that point. Surrounding properties are more than adequately notified. And that might be a good fail safe to do it. So that way you are kind of reflecting the spirit of allowing for potential development possibility that the Main Streets on Halsey Project suggested you should, you should try to accommodate. But still putting in the fail safes that the community has and making sure that you're not throwing out the baby with the bathwater, that you're still trying to maintain and reflect the desire to keep small town feel wherever possible. But without strangling potential opportunity that the development and, and the community has desired as far as added uses, added commercial opportunities, added residential opportunities. The Confluence site, which is again, the MU3 zoning district, that would be the air, the area behind the outlets. A similar paradigm, although the height allowance there would be allowed to be a little bit higher at fifty-five feet with an opportunity to go up to seventy-five feet, provided Planning Commission gets to hear that. And the justification for that height increase in part was because of the terrain consideration, how the Confluence site is anywhere from twenty-five to forty feet below the elevation of, of the main street. That height impacts, we believe, are going to be quite mitigated because of the terrain. Lot, lot that we covered there. I'll be happy to take any questions and refer back to the, these maps here.
Yes, Chris, if I may, can you go, I'm sorry, can you go back to the, the last slide that you had? Because I, I was reading out of it, that's why it would help. Yes, the question is, you know, you say any buildings above standard height are subject to a type three side development. What is the definition of standard height for us right now? I mean, in, in, in your vision, you, you create this document, you introduce your technique, you're going to use your biases, you created your latitude of what you're thinking. What is the standard height here?
In, in those light blue shaded areas, it's thirty-five feet. It's, it's status quo what we have right now.
But this is, this is the side south of historic Columbia River, right? Everything that is south. What about the outlets and the Confluence?
So the outlets here would be thirty-five feet as well, that's the standard. But then because of the positioning of them and because of potential either development or redevelopment opportunity that was suggested by the Main Streets on Halsey Plan, in order for development to actually pencil out, the cities should be considerate of allowing development to go higher. Correct. The Main Streets on Halsey Plan suggested doing bonuses or that if, if you develop it a certain way, you should provide bonuses and just allow it by right. And what we've heard pretty loud and clear is that height is a very sensitive issue for the community. And we feel that in order to retain a level of local control, not to mention a higher level of expectation for the development itself to design it well, that the better course of action would be to take it through Planning Commission, through a hearing. And if you can do it, great. And if you can't, then you need to go back to the drawing board or, or keep it below thirty-five feet.
Okay, so if somebody comes with forty-five feet in the outlets, it is acceptable through a type three review by the Planning Commission. That's what is intended.
Not a conditional use. What it is, is us as a staff basically saying, this is too controversial for us to make a decision. We're going to kick it, kick it to you. We already have that right in the development though. We can, we can make any staff decision. We can. To do a planning review. So this is a reflect.
Okay. I know, I know we are talking about subtlety right now and I know we are just, you're just drafting documents. So this is just. Okay, I know, I know we are talking about subtlety right now, and I know we are just, you're just drafting documents. So this is just meant for consideration. Then to to me, that that language that you use, 35 feet standard up to 55 feet and 55 feet standard up to 75 feet is a little confusing because if I read that in in a vacuum, that's, those are the parameter you give me. I don't have to go through something extra. So if the intent is what you're suggesting right now, 35 feet more needs a higher scrutiny. Then maybe a slightly different language of those two by the colors. Because, because to me, by in a vacuum, those don't show that there is an higher scrutiny if you go above 35. That tells you, I give you a parameter between 35 and 55, you're okay. And suddenly then you tell me I come a 45 and you tell me, no, wait a second, type three. And I'm thinking, that doesn't, that doesn't know what that he says. And again, I I know we are just drafting these things and I know we are viewing it a different way, but and I'm fine with the with the rationale that because there is a common sense about, you know, small community, even though we're going to have a conversation about that, because a small community field is not necessarily a one way direction with a with with low low FAR and low height. Because that that is really bleeding by thousand cuts because we know the model does not work. But I'm not going to talk about that. I'm talking about this. I'm in agreement. I just suggested, and maybe the language that you describe beside the colors be, I don't know what to describe it, be more open to the fact that if you go above 35, you are you are under higher scrutiny because the 35 feet up to 55 feet, that's what the standard is, right? Up to 55, then I'm 48, I'm fine.
So in lieu of using the word standard, we could just say 35 feet for a staff review, 55 feet for a planning commission review. And just issue all above 35.
Yeah, again, I don't have a solution. I just, or maybe if you want to say it below, when you say, and that's why I asked you to bring this slide back. Any building above the standard height of 35 feet might be that because you'll understand, Chris, now this is not a criticism. This is just, and and when we draft document, I've been there. I've been writing hundreds of these documents. And so you you you're thinking something and then I'm reading completely separated like it. It's not that I disagree with it. It's just that the two parts don't tell me the same information. So somehow to bring them together, that is very clear and I'm okay. About 35 feet, higher scrutiny, design, planning commission, fair enough. But then let's make it clear, we don't want to even marginally create unreasonable expectations or confusion.
Yeah, language matters and I think we'll take your comment pretty seriously.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just, I'm sure once you think about it, because drafting those documents is not easy. I know.
That's why.
Thank you.
So the upzoning that we're doing or proposing is based on.
Okay, so let me, let me refer, go to the the slide here we're referring to. So before, before I start, here's, here's a snapshot of what the existing zoning looks like kind of in this general area. This is, this is at present. And what we're trying to do here is anything that you see really shaded in this color could fit into one of these three prospective zoning districts, M1, MU1, MU2, and MU3. The the biggest influence right now, the most important thing that we have is for the confluence property to get a new zoning district done there. So the MU3 one is again, the one that that staff believes and city council has charged us to create that new zoning district. But while we were doing that and while we had the Main Streets on Halsey recommendation, they, it became apparent to us that we probably need to revisit and look at the the central business district, the lighter shade of purple and the mixed office housing to make sure that those zoning districts also matter too. And then we have an interesting sliver along Third Street of A2 apartment residential zone properties, but we also know that we have situations where we have a couple of offices in that zoning district. So we have several nonconformities. And we also have lots that quite frankly are just not dimensionally able to truly handle multifamily development. So is there a better way to consider zoning for those properties? So the term upzoning was used and that probably was not the right terminology to use because upzoning suggests in most cases, an increase of residential density. What we're talking about is maybe changing the zoning districts for certain properties. And of course, the properties would 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 have notification of it where it doesn't necessarily change density, but it changes flexibility of what you can do with the property. It may increase or better tailor what the expected or hoped land use might be for the property. So looking at this current zoning, we've then highlighted those properties, which we would potentially see a change if we wanted to convert to an MU1, 2, and 3 model. And you notice that the bulk of the the properties in downtown are not changing. But we have some properties, like for instance, where the food cart pod is going on the inside curve right here on 257th. That has the same zoning district right now that Celebrate Me Home or Pompeo's Restaurant has. So the spirit and the intent of the CBD zoning district for that smaller traditional storefront commercial development is being also applied to a restaurant or a food cart pod that has a completely different characteristic. So that's one of the justifications on certain properties, why you may want to consider changing their zoning. So with these highlights, if you, if you pay attention then to the next slide that we'll move to, we then reflect this three zone mixed use model. So I can go kind of before and after. Before and after, where again, if you notice that the color of that mixed use one downtown mixed use doesn't really change from the CBD. That's basically because that mixed use one zoning district is a legacy of the CBD zoning district. It maintains that that general frame. But in these areas here and a large number of them here are going to be potentially MU2, general mixed use. Where there are distinctions made from the downtown area. Where there may be some greater flexibilities as far as land uses are afforded. But keeping in mind though, that there are other standards that regulate development of those properties, namely the size of the property and the height restriction. So you may look at the properties here along Third or, you know, just south of the highway and say, well, you've changed the zoning, there might be some additional land uses there. There could be, but it also has to fit and it also has to make sense. And keep in mind, height, which is again, the largest concern that we've, we've heard over and over again throughout the community. Height is not changing for those properties. By and large, when you're talking about south of historic Columbia Highway or Halsey Street. So again, going back to the perspective zoning, what we're showing here is we're showing a very clear mixed use area that is focused on our downtown and then captures the peripheral areas. And we hope captures them accurately through potential land uses and and future development opportunity.
Okay, questions for staff? Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, if you could make me smart here. So on the MU3, why not include the outlets as part of that? Is there some rationale?
There definitely could be the possibility if they wanted to. I think one of the concerns we would maybe have with that is the fact of heights. It's because the outlets are 55 to 75 feet in height. The thought there was maybe 35 feet, maintaining 35 feet would be okay. 55 feet if the planning commission felt that it could be warranted through review.
You were, you were cutting out there, but I I think what you're saying is it's a, yeah, the land is higher there. And so the building height may not be able to go as high.
Kind of, it's, it's just that much closer to the street that the visual impact of going vertical has that much more of a dramatic effect than say the confluence site, which is set back 700 feet off of 257th. Where because of distance, the vertical height then is better blended into the back. Visual impact is much less effective.
I see, but but going over 55 becomes a conditional anyways, right?
For the confluence site, yes.
Yeah, okay, it was just a thought.
No, it's, and it's, you know, honestly, if if there was interest or desire from the outlets to either want to be a part of that 55 feet, that's, that's fine, but we didn't, we haven't approached them on that. The city owned property.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, it's in the same area, maybe it might, might go. And then another thought was, I thought we were discouraging drive-throughs anywhere near the downtown area.
Well, that was the original intent when, when the Town Center Plan was passed in 98. And then about 13 years ago, there was a request by some business owners to actually allow it. That did get approved by the council. So technically, drive-throughs right now are not restricted in downtown. Thankfully, nobody really tested anything in there. This effort would seek to basically reestablish that at least in the downtown floor, it's not a good idea. But maybe it's okay in the peripheral area and that that MU2 is certain areas. And that's what those maps that we showed exactly where it might be implemented.
Yeah, I think you got to look at the potential. Do we, do we want a fast food? Or a bank with drive-through in this particular area?
And in just as a reminder to the commission, those substantive maps really show variety of land use. The red, the green, and the stuff in between were the suggestions based on the use table that have of how so using your example, Commissioner Allen, that's a good one. Restaurants with with a drive-through would not be allowed in the downtown area, would not be allowed in the residential. But could be potentially permitted in some of these more peripheral areas with specific changes. That's at least how it's drafted right now. If you want to prohibit it throughout, hey, that's fine. That's, that's really your fault as a, as a community. Residents, restaurants, however, with no drive-through, in this case, there's probably a little bit greater acceptance for it, but you probably don't want to have too much in the residential area because
Okay, I think I have just one last thought on it is on the confluence. Having residential without, you know, business related to it. That would just become like regular, you know, residential area. I thought we were talking about maybe business on the bottom floor and residential above that. Is there a way of zoning that?
Certainly. I think the concern we would have is that if we're not able to secure prime access through the outlets to get there, that the commercial viability of that general area may not be as high. And what we're seeing in a lot of these mixed use buildings is the commercial storefronts sit vacant for a long period of time. That's already happening even like in our region.
Okay.
It's one thing that you, it's kind of a trick. You don't want to, you may not want to over regulate it for fear that you may have the vacant space that may not be filled for a while.
Okay, that'd be very interesting what the other commissioners think as well.
Anyone else?
When I think of, we're talking about the confluence, I think what Chris said, the access to it will determine how it will be developed. Because if you have to circle around factory outlets, then it's a little bit limited or more limited than what you'd have if you had direct access.
And that's what we've heard from the consultants is that residential can be accomplished back there even with indirect access, but commercial opportunities would be much more limited. When we've talked with with developers who have done developments like this before. Not impossible, though.
I think they no, they kind of have an interesting approach that they've taken here.
Who's they? I'm sorry.
Cascadia.
Well, some of this work is from the city staff, not from Cascadia.
I'm not a huge fan of rezoning. You know, I think we'd have to be a little careful with that. Also, we get out here in the Halsey area.
Which area, which map are you on?
I'm a TCAB land use review. And we get out here in this kind of red zone to the left. And that's kind of out of the their layer of jurisdiction at that point. TCabs.
As currently proposed, I mean, that could be colored green if that's important to people.
Also looking at it like if I go, not sure why this is, but if I go to the next page, right? And that's the TCAB review area, but it doesn't include the confluence.
Which page are you on? I'm sorry.
I went one map up, which is where you are. See where it says the dash line indicates the area where TCAB review would occur. So you got this section in downtown that TCAB's looking at, but it doesn't include the confluence.
That could be just, I mean, we could amend the map that shows the the dash line and wrapping it around there.
Okay.
That one is kind of a a legacy of the existing downtown design standards that are currently on the books. So we can, we can expand it to the confluence, but I don't, I don't know right now if there was a preference on architectural standards to be applied for the confluence, which is why I think the dashed area only applied to downtown where there's very clearly a desire to have early 20th century style architecture to preserve kind of that historic feel. And whether or not that same architectural style should apply in the confluence site or not. Some
And it may not.
And it may not. I know one of the counselors last night suggested that maybe it should or it could. But I don't think that's been determined yet. So the, going back to that previous map, this is just showing, okay, hey, you have these, these 20, early 20th century design standards, maybe in this area that's dashed, but TCAB still, or there would still be a review of of development in the confluence in addition to that. Does that make sense?
It it does.
Yeah.
I would just think it'd be more comprehensive.
Sure.
And I think we'll probably get a little pushback on multifamily. Being permitted. That use.
As far as on the confluence side or as far as where? As far as on the Confluence side or as far as where?
But we're basically 70, we can go to 75 in the Confluence. And then we're 55 as we come into town and pretty much everything else is 35.
As far as site limits now?
Yeah. Well, we'll be.
That's that's the the potential. That's what's suggested.
Yeah.
To go, I mean, one thing to to remind the group too, to go above 45 feet for developers, it increases costs per square foot quite a lot. So in many cases, development may just because of economic reality may just limit itself to 45 feet, even if it had the potential to go above 35 feet, it may not try to go all the way to 55 because that introduces a lot more complexity to the building design and character and and building material.
We don't have to go all the way down to Bedrock though there, do we?
I don't know.
I would think we would like on the other side. So it's kind of a pretty big change. I'm sure we'll get a little
Well, and you will, yeah, you'll you'll have also next month to discuss it. We have it for your your meeting next month to continue to pick up where we leave off tonight, wherever it might be. But if if there is any particular one that I think staff would want your feedback on is that that right side column in your packet and also on the screen was the land uses for the Confluence. That's going to be really important for us to to hone in in on. To make sure that you're comfortable with what could be. And we we showed you the maps of the other areas so you could see it in relation to the rest of of downtown and periphery. That's why we we showed those other colors. Certainly next month, if you want to have a discussion about should we rezone property? Do we need to or or get into those details? We can have that, but we do want to make sure we at least address the Confluence or have at least a better idea of what you want to do tonight with that. So that's that last.
Right, and so you yeah, the council's asked for a specific zone for that.
Correct.
I would have done it the other way because that's me.
But then most of that will apply to the unique properties north of Halsey.
You're talking about the new zoning district? No, that would apply right now as intended only to the city-owned properties at the site.
But you're, you know, you're going from 35 to 75 and you're going from 35 to 55 in the other area potentially.
Yeah, that's in the unique areas.
Yeah.
And the height of the water tower is what again?
125. So if you look at the water tower, that first rung is at 35 feet. It's actually rather convenient. 35 feet is that first rung of the water tower. The second cross ring is at 75 feet. So you can literally see from the water tower where where those heights are or where they could be if if adopted as as suggested.
That's a good reference on what it might look like.
It's that was just pure luck.
Like I just think, you know, some of the downtown stuff that would be 55 or could be 55.
The downtown things?
In here.
Can you, can you?
On Halsey.
Okay.
Between Halsey and West Distort Columbia River Highway.
You're talking about these areas here on the on the west side of the map here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, that is in relation to some of the suggestions that came out of the Main Streets on Halsey project. Where remember that it was two-faced. The the first phase was hey, let's look at some property in that area. Let's see what could be developed. And when they ran the Development Proformas for speculative development, they found that with our current zoning standards, development does not pencil out in this existing market. And that the only way really that development that I think people would consider generally highest and best use, and that's based on the zoning district. You have to go higher for development to pencil out, or you have to start thinking about subsidizing development. That's that's kind of the economic reality that they're suggesting. That doesn't mean that the city has to do it. It's just saying if you are anticipating or hoping or expecting development in some of these areas. These are the realities that the market is suggesting.
I know it's an interesting, it's a unique site, but where's there 75 foot around here? For reference.
Trying to think if there's one aggression.
That's what I was trying to think of too.
Is there one along Stark Street down near 181st in that area where they're redeveloping all that property down there?
John Paul, you might know better since I know you're you're working from, do you recall any height height limits over at Rockwood in that area? I think you're muted, sir.
You're muted, John.
No, Chris, my apologies. I I'm not involved in the side side of the project, so nothing to come to mind right now in this moment. I'm I'm sure as soon as the meeting is over, everything is a flashback, but right now, nothing.
So so one one that might be helpful, because I think when we're talking about heights of this, oops, of this magnitude, it's probably largely going to be driven maybe by a hotel use and nothing else. And if you think about the hotels that are, say, along Airport Way, there's, I think, an Embassy Suites there. Embassy Suites is by default almost always six stories for the height minimum. And six stories of height in a hotel development is usually 70 to 75 feet when you count the elevator shafts. So that that's an example, that's probably the closest example of of kind of a height kind of this side of of the metro that I can think of, our hotel developments.
And that's 75 feet?
The Embassy Suites is, I believe, yeah. And again, a lot of it is also dependent, you know, the the visual impact of the height is always always dependent on its surroundings, you know? So keep keep that in mind, too.
It's going to be a real balancing act for the community.
It will be, but I I think if you look at economic reality, I don't believe you're going to have a bunch of 75-foot-tall buildings in the Confluence. Economic reality stack and and the cost of construction and the likelihood of certain types of uses going down there, you're probably going to have a variety of heights. Development conversations when we've shown them the site just to get feedback, most think maybe four stories at most because of those considerations of of construction costs. And considerations, quite frankly, of the community. People realize this is a suburban community and has a small-town feel and there there is some sensitivity to it. And the city, because we own the property, not only do we get to regulate it, we get to determine who to sell it to.
Right.
And if if the seller's vision is dramatically different from what the city wants, the city doesn't sell it. Or the buyer's vision, excuse me.
Right, but you can buyers have different visions. Unless you're going to deed-restrict it.
Which you have every right to.
Yeah, it's going to be hard to carry that forward. No, I just think that, you know, if you line it out for permitted use, let's say for a four-story apartment building as an example. That may be financially feasible, but I don't know that it's community feasible.
But all the speculation is still market-driven.
Yeah. It's all market-driven. And I think at the end of the day, you know, you got to find something that can be built, but also that the that the community is going to embrace and is going to support.
Well, and and the Town Center Committee, keep in mind, had certain development expectations that it has suggested for council to consider. One of them is also a preference to homeownership, which admittedly, you cannot regulate ownership versus rental through a development code, but understand that through the allowance of, say, townhomes, which we would show on this map to be an allowed use. And then we have a demonstration of, hey, we want to see ownership models. You know, that suggests townhomes or condominiums as opposed to apartments. But we know that right now the market for condominiums is very difficult. A developer might be more inclined to look at a townhome solution model. So this is, you know, this, again, the code provides the opportunities for things, but but the market and and the development preferences will ultimately dictate prospective development.
Right. But I think on that property, you know, and we can debate this, but I think on that property, I don't think the expectation is multifamily apartments. As what Cascadia, what their presentation was.
There, I don't, I don't suspect, to be fair to them, I think they were showing a model of what the market has suggested it can do easily. That's not what they're suggesting the city should do. They're basically saying, we know that, we know the development community has told us this could work.
Right.
That doesn't mean you should do it.
No, I know, and they presented, but they had four examples that were all apartments.
Right, but
And it's kind of like it's going for not the low-hanging fruit, but the fruit that's already on the ground.
Well, to be fair, though, some of those those examples were mixed-use buildings, which were talked about as a preferred building typology, where you would have the ground floor retail. But the honest-to-God truth is mixed-use buildings these days in this market are almost always when a residential component is considered are going to be apartment instead of condominium-based. Because that's where the market is right now, and that's legally where condominium development has gotten so difficult to do. So it's almost a values judgment at that point. If the city wants to see mixed, vertical mixed-use development there, great. But understand that comes likely then with with an apartment rather than a condo. So if the city wants to back off from that model, fine. But then expects that you need to then, and if you have that that preference for homeownership, then understand the trade-off is you may have to allow other residential uses, which which by code, as we're proposing, suggests you can do that, too. Apart from a detached single-family house, every other residential housing typology is is a permitted or permitted with with specific standard use in that area as as proposed. So this gives you some flexibility as a community to say, hey, you know, this is, this is how we think we can develop it. And if you can't develop it at a certain way, here are some other options for you.
Right. I just know I'll have a little feedback.
That's fine.
Okay. Anybody else?
I had one other line item listing that I questioned. Accessory dwelling units across the board on all the multi-use zones.
As to why why we're suggesting that that should be allowed?
Right.
For which one?
Accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
So what we're seeing, and we we have this already in a a development that's underway, the Lancaster Park subdivision, which is a townhome development, we're seeing now townhomes being developed that include an ADU within the townhome as a possibility. It's a relatively new and novel concept, but it 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 speaks to two things. One is it can increase additional housing density without really increasing the visual impact of the property, let alone the space required for it. Two, it also provides maybe an affordable mechanism or a a multi-generational family element where you can keep a secondary accessory unit on that same property. So we did want to preclude that opportunity to occur. And then we would just default to the ADU standards we have currently in the code.
Okay, Chris, that 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 makes more sense to me. I was I was mistakenly thinking tiny houses.
No. No, not going there.
Okay, anyone else?
Just one more question about the height. This is another thought. If there were like more specific parameters of when you could go above 55 feet for the Confluence site, like say if only if it's a hotel use or only if it's within 500 feet of the freeway or something like that, is there any thought about like how you may want to restrict it further, rather than just say, oh, the planning commission should take a look at it?
Chris, that's a very good question, and I and I think that is the focus we're going to have to go because I was thinking before. At what point would you become capricious, subjective, inappropriate? And at what point we inhibits creativity? Because that's all relevant, because you know, we we are all right now, 10 of us, 20 pair of hands, 20. But in five years, the technology might change. If I be in 10 years or 15 years, the development opportunity might change. At what time, how clearly do we want to be? In my side, there's the demands consideration because we don't, I don't want to create a usual expectation. I don't want to stifle too much development, but also I don't want to be capricious, subject inappropriate. I I'm I'm open, but on the other end, as a certain point, all of us were here today, I'm not going to be here. And so what kind of rationale that a commissioner is going to be using, are they going to be capricious, subject inappropriate? It's it's a good question. I I think you got to put some thoughts and help us here because maybe look at, I like at a code that I've somehow bridged that gap because that is the essence. If if we go too much in a way, we can have this incentive for development, even a good one. And if we go the other way, is I don't know, I don't have an answer right now, but 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 this is the essence. Because that that height and excuse whatever you want to say, I I like in general, it's a very general approach. I like to be open-ended. You you present me something, you convince me on the strength of your argument, being technology, being marketing study, being mixed-use, being wealth, because in the end, I'm going to capitalize every time of that. I I I understand the sense of a small village for the city, but in the end, we have a responsibility to go above and beyond that because the city is paramount to everything and the wealth of the city cannot be compromised even by go to a model that people call small village. So how do we bridge that? I I don't know. That's going to be good job for you to think about it. But I I demand conversation because this is the essence.
Mr. Wilk, I see if your mic off.
Yeah, it's off.
Okay.
So again, this this general topic will be revisited at your your next meeting, which will be on April the 14th. So this will come back to you. In the meantime, between now and then, if any commissioner wants to meet with staff to discuss and and review it, we will send out that updated table that you saw that was a little bit expanded from what you saw in the in the packet. So we'll get that to you as well. And we'll be more than happy to to have that discussion, but we'll we'll continue to pick it up next month as well.
I I also would recommend looking at the Town Center Plan, too. Because somehow we Because somehow we have to bridge the gap between what we have here and what's in that plan. And while we're talking about that, we've already closed up on this.
I think so. Unless there were any other items.
Okay. I guess I'll move on to the next item.
Well, this is Commissioner Allen. I just had one more thought. Chris, if you get a chance to talk to the outlook, I mean, the outlet area, sometime, I don't know how convenient that is for you and get their thoughts. Just if you have that opportunity, it'd be nice to know what their thoughts are on, on these, what we're, what we're discussing here.
Yeah, we will. We will thank you for that.
And they'll get noticed.
If there's a change, yeah. If, if they're, they're happy with their zoning district and if folks don't recommend changing zoning too much, then that's fine.
Well, if we're recommending a zone change.
They have to be notified. Yeah. I think they said they were eighty-seven percent full. I'm sure they would remind some flexibility in their zone.
Next thing. Our next meeting would be on the
The next meeting is April fourteenth.
Okay.
As far as, yeah, so I guess we're in staff communication. So your next meeting will be April fourteenth. This topic will come up again for, for a conversation. We're not expecting another hearing until April twenty-eighth is, is likely the first potential hearing. And then as far as any potential map amendments that we're, that we've talked about as far as either creating the new zoning districts, that would probably come in late May at earliest. But I think we want one more round to make sure we're, we're heading in the right direction with that. Our goal is to get a, a zoning district in front of council that they can approve by the time they take their summer break. That also helps us as a staff to help market the property or to begin marketing the property for development solicitation too. Beyond that, well, we're happy to have Amber back, excuse me, Arini back. We're happy to have Amber back too, but we're happy that Arini is, is back and happy and healthy. And I know she's very anxious to be back and has driven, gone right back into the deep end with a lot of work. But thank you, Amber, for your efforts while Arini was out and I'm really welcome back. Hopefully we haven't scared you away yet.
Arini, Arini, how's your new alarm clock working?
Um, it might be, you guys might have saw, saw that I yawned a little bit. It's because it's that week where he's really excited at three in the morning, then five in the morning, then six in the morning. So yeah, that's just, you know, life.
I understand. I used to have long blown there and planned to be before I had Gumpel. So I understand where you are.
I'm glad to be back though, to get back into the groove of things. So.
I'll come back.
Thanks.
Couple of other business items of note, the Town Center Plan is going to have a work session with the council on the twenty-third of March. I know you folks have seen it already, but if you wanted a refresher or see where council's trending toward it, the twenty-third council will be having a work session on that.
And i- if possible, that would be, I think, helpful for you in this other discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because this all ties together. So if you could make that, that would wouldn't hurt you.
Yep.
And that's the twenty-third?
Tuesday, Tuesday, the twenty-third. It's, it's a six-thirty start because it's a work session. So we'll, we'll get the invite out to you all. That is actually spring break week. Normally the city doesn't have meetings on spring break week, but this year and last year we're, here's like any other. So just notice on that one too. The housing needs analysis is likely going to come back before you all. That might be one of your hearings on, in late April. That is because of a technicality we had passed or the city had approved the housing needs analysis by resolution instead of by ordinance. So in order to fix that technicality, the housing needs analysis is expected to come back to you for first whack and then to city council for two readings. Nothing fundamentally changes about it. This is procedural. So I would, we would highly suggest avoiding any temptations to change a document that you have just approved previously because that complicates the factor. Don't rub your hands, Mr. Chair. But so that, that keeps us in line with the state requirements. We are not the only community that is having to do this. Several other communities who had recently done it and passed it by resolutions are having to go back to the drawing board. So we would ask that. Certainly downwind, if there are changes or further discussion about housing policy, we can tackle that downwind certainly over the summer. But just a heads up that that'll likely be one of your hearings in April, if for late April.
I think the more appropriate time and guess would be when we take a second look at our housing comprehensive plan update. With the new census data, we'll need to update those numbers again. So I think in implementing the housing needs analysis findings into that. And we already did some of that work last year in the fall, but following up and continuously working on that.
Amber, Arini, any other items of interest that we need to share with the commission? Okay. All right. We'll yield back, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we've got that work session on the twenty-third. Possibly our next meeting is on the fourteenth. All right. Commissioner, what are doing? Commissioner Prickett?
I want to think the I can't think of his name now. For having that homeless person removed and the cleanup is complete. It looks really nice under there and he, our court enforcement officer was very good at what he did. So he did a really good job and a lot of the residents have asked me to say, thank you. They appreciate it.
We'll pass that along to Joe. Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Prickett.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
I had no comment.
Commissioner Wilcox?
I wasn't going to have anything, but since Shirley mentioned the residents under the overpass, I'd recommend to all the commissioners and all staff also. Last council meeting, Counselor Caswell and a look over President Kelly Brumall presented a short video clip taken at Thousand Acres and the homeless encampments there. It was a pretty shocking to me personally. And they were kind of leaning on the Metro Councilor Craddock, who also attended that meeting Tuesday to do something about it. And I don't think they made a lot of headway, but I really encourage you to, when that video is posted of the meeting, to check out the segment on the Thousand Acres. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Roney?
No comment. Thank you.
Couple. One, remember as we get into this, this is a type four. So talk to people that are out there. Engage with the community. Make your, it'll make your job a little bit easier. And I wanted to echo what Mr. Commissioner Wilcox said. It was a pretty interesting video that was played last night. And if you get a chance, take a look at it when it gets uploaded. It's, it's quite an area down there. I don't think we quite understand to the extent of what we have going on there as a community. One comment on the east end of the Troutdale Bridge. Okay, there was a pothole there and I appreciate that it got filled. But they just used straight cold patch. And so if they could come back and do it again with something with some compound in it, that'd be really cool.
This is the east end, right?
Yeah.
Of the bridge? Yeah, we'll have to let ODOT know to go back and fix it again.
And there's also a pothole just north of Tad's where someone broke a tire just the other day on it.
Oh, that's really encouraging. Okay. Another ODOT facility. So.
Yeah, I'm just relaying it within your jurisdiction. All right. If nobody has anything else.
I move adjourn.
Okay.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Nice seeing you, Sandy.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Bye-bye.